Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Larry Carce is here from Harfus Hills Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Morris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the great opportunity we have to gather together today here. We thank you that we can call you our Father because you've made us and also by faith in Jesus Christ, you can become our spiritual Father as we're in your family. We thank you for the opportunity we have to call upon you in prayer. We often, Father, think of how life would be if we couldn't pray, but when we come to you today, Lord, we acknowledge that we have a need and we cannot meet that need ourselves. We're dependent upon you. We also, in praying, Father, express our trust in you, our confidence in you, that you know all things, you can do all things, you do all things right, always, all the time. And so, as we bow for you, before you today in prayer, we want to thank you for our city, for its leaders, even as we, as we come here this morning, we're overwhelmed with all the construction and new things that we see, and as we come into City Hall, we realize again the awesome responsibility that these men and women have, and we thank you for them, for their faithfulness to our city, for the sacrifices they make to provide for us and meet the needs of this place. We ask today, Lord, that you will bless in this meeting, that as we gather together here first of all to pray, that you will give wisdom in every decision that's made today. You've said, "If any man lacked wisdom, we can ask of you," and that you will give freely and you will not ever scold us for coming. And so, we know not what's on the agenda today. These people know, and you know, and I pray that in every decision that they make, that they would truly honor you and where spiritual principles would be involved, that they would follow in line with your word, the Bible, that you would bless them and guide them and lead them. That is our prayer, and we'll give you the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are so fortunate in this community to have Oklahoma City University and its wonderful performing arts people, and this morning, we have asked students Molly Rushing and Adam Pfister to come over and perform for us. These OCU students are performing in the Broadway musical Smile, and it is coming to OCU, and after they've sung, they will give us some information on where and when these performances will be. So Molly, Adam, it's all yours.
I guess we'll say a little bit about musical Smile with a beauty pageant, and it's pretty funny and it's kind of poignant at times. I play a character called Big Bob Freeland, who is the host of a pageant as well as an RV salesman. And he has a song called "Bobby's Song," which I'm going to sing for you. (Music) You toss your days away to make your dollar, and by the time you bring it home, you know it's spent. You drink your beer and watch your Monday football and wonder where in hell your youth and good times went. But mister, you can't sit around just feeling sorry for yourself. You gotta get on out and pitch on in and help somebody else. Run a car wash for the handicapped, raise funds for the new town hall, spend a weekend with the Little League, teach a kid how to play ball. And if your life ain't everything you wanted it to be, someone else's life is better. Came home from now and found the circle started. I turned around, I had a car, a kid, a wife. Before I knew it, there's a loan, and then a mortgage, and then a business, and a ranch house, and a life that's not a life. But mister, I won't sit around just feeling sorry for myself. No, sir, I'm gonna get right out and pitch on in and help somebody else. Run a car wash for the handicapped, raise funds for the new town hall, spend a weekend with the Little League, teach a kid how to play ball. And if I never get to see the world I hoped I'd live to see, I'll help someone else to get there. That sounds good to me.
Hi, I'm Molly Rushing. In the musical Smile, I play a character named Doria Hudson. She's from Texas, and she just loves beauty pageants, and she's absolutely desperate to win, mostly because she doesn't have a very good home life, and she thinks that if she wins these pageants, then her family will realize why. They should love her. This is a song called Disneyland. (Music) (Inaudible) sending light, I guess the folks were busy fighting. Joe'd already left home. Eleven years old on my own, feeling nothing but lonely. There's nothing to do, there's nothing out there but the traffic down on State 93. So I'd sit through the night by our old black and white TV. And that's when I saw it, that's when I heard it calling, calling me. Disneyland, Magic Kingdom, Disneyland. Close my eyes real tight, wishing hard I might, wishing hard I may. Find my way to Disneyland. Gotta get to Disneyland on a western breeze. Magic carpet and leaves, carry me away. Oh, I know you're gonna say the trees are paper mache, it's done with mirrors, the magic there. Each little bird's full of springs, you press a button, it sings recorded music in the air. They've got the matching vase, it's only plywood and paste. Go on, say it, I'll turn around and tell you, I don't care. I don't care. I will live in Disneyland. Make my home in Disneyland. Maybe it's all fake, but that's a chance I'll take. It's perfectly okay. Someone give me Disneyland. Take me there to Disneyland. And when I get to Disneyland, I'll stay. Our show runs October 8th through the 10th. October 8th and 9th are Friday and Saturday. There will be shows at 8 o'clock, and then Sunday, the 10th, will be at 3:00. You can call 208-5227 to get tickets or go to www.okcu.edu/ticketoffice. We hope to see you all there. Thank you for listening to us today.
Aren't they wonderful? Molly Rushing, Adam Pfister, thank you very much for coming down today, and I know we're gonna enjoy those performances at OCU. Thank you again.
Thank you. Well, I hope you all know you have to follow back. We have a number of proclamations to move forward on today. Molly and Adam gathered things. They have to get to class, that's why they have to go first. We are gonna start with the idea that October is Disability Awareness Month, and so, we have asked all of the members of the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns to come down and join us today. Pam Henry chairs that group, and she's coming forward now. Let us bring up the rest of the group. Everybody come forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the month of October 2010 is designated in the United States as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas 2010 is the 20th anniversary of the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, the landmark legislation which set the standard as the most comprehensive civil rights law for people with disabilities. The city of Oklahoma City is implementing an ADA transition plan and MAPS projects, making facilities and transit accessible, and the city's ADA coordinator and staff work daily to assure that city programs and facilities are accessible to all. Whereas Oklahoma City needs the knowledge, skill, talent, and productivity of our citizens with disabilities to help energize our economy, and Oklahoma City's people with disabilities deserve the opportunity to work and have full lives. Whereas this year's theme for the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concern is "Let Accessibility Win in 2010." Whereas on October 26, 2010, in Oklahoma City, the Mayor's Committee on Disability's Concern is providing a special seminar on ADA accessibility and is also holding its 20th annual awards luncheon to honor outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being. An area student artist have created posters and billboards raising awareness of progress for people with disabilities. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2010 as Disability Awareness Month, and Tuesday, October 26, as Special Disability Awareness Day in Oklahoma City, and he urges observance by all citizens as a reminder that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, and be self-supporting if given the opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation to our Committee on Disability Concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Cornet, council, and all the city staff, and you do have a good committee here. They work hard. But we thank Oklahoma City for observing the Americans with Disabilities Act for 20 years. It really helps get people to work, to the doctor, to have a full life. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. One more time, let's show our appreciation. Thank you all for looking here. Good job. Thank you. Thanks for coming by. Thank you. It is also Fire Prevention Month. We have Chief Tim Adams and Captain Jerry Korthanki. Will you come up? Did I pronounce your last name right, Jerry? Korthanki. Come on up. Everybody come up. Chief, come on up. Only got two names here, but we'll bring everybody up here. We have a proclamation. Let's the clerk to read it as I pull it out.
Whereas in 2009, the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded over 78,000 emergency calls for assistance, and whereas fire killed 13 of our citizens and injured 30 others, whereas fire caused over $23 million in property loss. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their own friends and coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in public education to prevent the frequency and severity of fires. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2010 as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and safety practices and apply them in the home, at work, and around our community.
Let's show our appreciation to our firefighters, and let's use this opportunity to talk about fire prevention. So Chief, what can people do, or do you have someone else you'd rather speak about the fire prevention opportunities?
Well, I can talk real quick and then let Chief Adams maybe add some things, but again, October's Fire Prevention Month traditionally here in the city and all across the country. Although Chief Adams and his staff do a great job all year round in offering fire prevention education and information to all the citizens of the city, this is a month that we try and place special emphasis on it. You know, it's one of those months that we try, it starts getting cooler, so heaters start working, and we want people to check those places in their homes and make sure that they have a working smoke alarm. You know, our project, Life, is an ongoing project right now that we're targeting the core area of the city and trying to make sure that everybody has a working smoke alarm, and we provide a 10-year lithium battery smoke alarm to any resident that needs one and wants one. So that's, you know, a few of the things that we have going on. All right, Chief Adams, speak to a few more things.
This year, NFPA and the fire departments across the nation, as well as Oklahoma City, the theme is "Smoke Alarms: A Sound You Can Live With." Now, that's an obnoxious sound, I know that, but it's one of those things that can make the difference between life and death, and the latest statistics show that over 80% of the homes in the United States have a smoke alarm, but less than 40% of them work. That means we need to check our smoke alarms on a regular basis. If you don't have a smoke alarm, go by any fire station in the city of Oklahoma City, we'll give you one. If you're in that high-risk corridor, we'll come by and install it for you, do a home safety inspection, give you a 10-year lithium battery smoke alarm. Dual element this year, by the way. We've gotten grants, over the last three years, we've received two NFPA grants totaling of about $80,000, purchasing about 8,000 10-year smoke alarms. In the last four years, we've installed or given out over 13,000 smoke alarms, and none of those were at tax dollars. Every one of those were grants. As a matter of fact, you could help us with a grant we're working on right now. If you could go to, oh, I'm plugging here, BfireSmart.com. If you go on there, log on, take a short safety quiz at Credit Oklahoma City Fire Department. With that quiz, we're in the running for another $10,000 grant from Liberty Mutual, so we'd love to have your help.
We don't need these smoke alarms gathering dust with us. We need them out in the community, so if you or if you know someone who needs a smoke alarm, just drop by any fire station, pick one up for them, and you can get it installed awfully easy. So thank you very much, and again, October is Fire Prevention Month, so let's all do our part. Thanks, let's show our appreciation. (Applause)
Mayor, if I could, real quick, I'll get on my soapbox that I get on every year, but I don't know that a community could ever pour enough money into code enforcement and public education, because it's easy to track fires when you have them, and you can determine whether your code enforcement lessened the damage of fire or prevented the damage of fire. It's easy to tell when you have a fire, if somebody got out safely because there was a smoke alarm, or nobody was hurt because they got out safely. What you cannot track is the number of fires that never happened because of code enforcement or public education, and I think that's the unknown factor that people tend to forget sometimes. So I applaud their efforts. I always have. It's a group on the department that you don't hear about a lot until they actually save somebody's life, and I appreciate all they do.
Absolutely. Well, October is also the month for Halloween. Wendell, why don't you come on up? Wendell is our parks director. We have a proclamation talking about trick-or-treat night and what night it's going to be, and so people can start making their plans. Why don't we read the proclamation?
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry. Whereas Halloween is the time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghost goblins and strange and mysterious creatures, and whereas our city's children celebrate Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional holiday treats, whereas the annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. Whereas it is important to our community that children be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety of the children and protect the rights of homeowners. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Saturday, October 30, as Trick or Treat Night in Oklahoma City, and he encourages both children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of activities to the afternoon and early evening hours. That households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch light and exterior lights. That youngsters only call on homes so lighted, and he asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
Now, can I get a round of applause for trick-or-treat? (Applause) And it sounds like you all are gonna go get some candy. Wendell, this is a special time for the kids in our area, and I know one of the other messages we have is to be watching out for those little goblins.
That's true. Children thinking about candy and goblins don't think about crossing the street after looking they just crossed the street. So it's up to all of us as adults to make sure we're aware of the fact that children are gonna be out, and we get to take care of the kids. We know that, so let's all be very careful that evening. Let the kids have fun, and we'll do the thinking about safety.
Thank you, Wendell. Appreciate it very much. There's your proclamation. We'll move on. Oh, sure, go ahead. We will now talk about the cooperation that we have engaged in with the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and the Oklahoma City Downtown Rotary Club. The three of us are working on honoring a Teacher of the Month, and for the second month in a row, we are doing so, and Greg Estridge is here. Greg, why don't you come on down? Oh, he's up here on the second row. And we have a resolution, and before we do that, Greg, you're from which school?
Wilson Elementary.
Which is not far from here.
Right up the street.
Yeah. Let's read the resolution, then we'll get settled.
Whereas Greg Estridge has been named Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club 29 for September 2010, and whereas Greg Estridge teaches pre-kindergarten through 5th grade drama at Wilson Elementary. Whereas Greg has been honored as an Anshaa recipient from the Theater for Young Audiences. He was honored as a Wilson Elementary 2009-10 Building Teacher of the Year. He was honored as a first runner-up for the Oklahoma City Public Schools 2010-11 District Teacher of the Year. And whereas Greg Estridge believes that arts education and daily integration of the arts into instruction are critical to meet the diverse instructional needs of students in all classrooms. Whereas Greg Estridge leads his students to learn through self-exploration, self-investigation, self-regulation, and collaboration to help his students discover, describe, and discuss their world. Whereas Greg Estridge uses drama to access students' emotions first, which leads to increased expression and cognition. Whereas Greg Estridge is described as an exceptional educator, advocate, and ambassador. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Greg Estridge on his selection as September 2010 Teacher of the Month by the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club 29 of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for Greg. Congratulations. (Applause) I'm excited about the trick-or-treat thing, really, I gotta tell you. I just want to thank you very much. I want to thank the entire city council, Larry McAtee especially for serving Wilson, and Robin and the foundation. These people all work together really to support education, and I gotta tell you, I think of one of my favorite quotes, "If I've seen further than others, it's because I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. What you do makes a difference." Thank you. Thank you, Greg, very much. And before you go, this resolution actually requires a vote, so not so fast. We need a motion? And a second? Now we gotta vote, see if Greg's really gonna be the Teacher of the Month. Cast your votes. And it's unanimous. How about that? The controversy's over. Greg, thanks very much. Appreciate it. One more round of applause for our Teacher of the Month. (Applause) And today also, we're going to honor many of... Do you want to say something? Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna be really quick and just kind of add on to this. Robin Hilger was recognized with the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools, but I wanted to mention that Greg would be recognized at the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City's lunch today, and he will be presented with a $500 gift card that is a donation from the members of the Rotary Club, the Rotary Club Foundation, and matched by the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools to be able to use in his classroom, however he chooses to do that.
That's true. Not quite as valuable as a unanimous vote from the Oklahoma City.
Not quite, but helpful, I hope.
At most.
It's more difficult to give.
Yeah, more difficult to give. You bet. Thank you. And Greg, congratulations again. Now, let's have our Adopt a Park Awards winners come forward. Why don't we...Lisa, you and Nikki, want to come up first, and we'll kind of work it from that angle, and then we'll bring them up by ward, starting with Ward 1 and on over with Ward 2. But our Oklahoma City Beautiful, which does a wonderful job of figuring out ways that Oklahoma City can look better, and has been doing so now for over a decade, has an award program in which they allow citizens of Oklahoma City to go into their specific neighborhoods and work on beautification projects, and they go through and try and determine who deserves the top award from each part of the city. And so, Lisa, I know we have eight groups that are gonna be honored here this morning, and they will come up and they will get their award. Am I good so far?
You're right.
All right? And so, let's bring up Ward 1, Mr. Bud Morris, the Home and Garden Club, and everybody else. Bud, that you brought with you today. Take over, Lisa.
Well, I'm Lisa Seiner, and I'm the executive director of Oklahoma City Beautiful. I'm going to, proud to announce that we are celebrating our 40th year as a nonprofit in Oklahoma City, and we are honored to work with the Parks and Recreation Department on adopting our parks. We have 100 parks adopted, but we have 100 more. So if anybody would like to help us, we would love for you to give us a call. I'd like to introduce Suzanne Baca. She's gonna present the award. She is our beautification chairman. She's a board member and the chairman of our beautification committee.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, from Ward 1, we have the Home and Garden Club representing Surry Hills Boulevard and the medians. They are beautifying Surry Hills. Okay, in Ward 2, we have the Oklahoma Horticultural Society, Mariana Anderson, and she's here to represent Will Rogers Garden Exhibition Center and the Legacy Garden. They also won the Most Outstanding Adopt a Park in Oklahoma City this year. (Applause)
Let's show a round of applause.
Then we have Early Wine Tennis Center Flower Beds. We have Steve, Henry, and Randy. Here from Ward 5, congratulations. Next, we have from Ward 6, Linwood Place Neighborhood Association, and we have Jennifer Freeman.
You know what I do? I think I gave the wrong one to her. Oh, hold on. (Laughter) (Inaudible).
In Linwood, they take care of the Drexel Median from Northwest 16th through 23rd, Northwest 19th Median.
Northwest 19th Median, 3100 to the 3400 blocks, Wayman Park, and Triangle Median Northeast of Wayman Park. That's a lot. Congratulations.
All righty, in Ward 7, we have the Quail United Methodist Church, if you all would come up. We have Latonya Moore, and they adopt Perry Park. Congratulations. Thank you. We actually have three more where the adopters could not be present, so I will just call them out. From Ward 3, we have Girl Scout Troop 848, and they have adopted...winner, because they adopted Mackelman Park. Also, Jack Freed is an adopter for Mackelman Park. Oh, actually, I take that back. The Girl Scout Troop is Woodrun Park. Jack Freed is Mackelman Park. And then we also have Ward 8, Donna Mackelwitz, from Friends of Martin Nature Park, so Martin Nature Park winner also.
Let's show our appreciation for them. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Oklahoma City Beautiful does some wonderful things, and you know, you don't have to just compete for awards, but if you'd like to work with Oklahoma City Beautiful, they have some wonderful ideas and can help coordinate your effort in your individual neighborhood, and it's all about making Oklahoma City a better and cleaner place to live. So Oklahoma City Beautiful is wonderful. Lisa, thank you so much for your group's help. We also have news today that Emsa has received a major award. So let's bring Emsa up here, who is Commissioner Stephen Dean, the Chief Operating Officer, Frank Gresh, the Director of Communications, Gary Lord, the Director of Operations, John Graham, Director of Materials, Joe Wallace, the Director of Scheduling, and Laura O'Leary. Congratulations, you all. This is the...guess where? I'm gonna let you all explain what the award is for. John, good to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Explain, it's called the CAS Award Recognition.
Yes, Emsa is proud to be a part of the public-private partnership which provides emergency medical services, including ambulance service, to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we have met the gold standard in the ambulance industry. Emsa has been accredited by the Commission for the Accreditation of Ambulance Services. Less than 1% of the ambulance companies in the United States are accredited.
Wow.
Yes, we're very proud of this honor, and we want to thank the city for recognizing us today, and I want you to know that the medics and dispatchers and all of us who support them are very proud of this accomplishment. Thank you.
More progress and the men and women who serve us in that matter. Thank you all very much. Let's show our appreciation to our local Congress. Thank you all. Thanks very much. Congratulations. That's a terrific award. Congratulations. You bet. Way to go. We're on Item 3 of the Council Agenda. Looks like we still have some business there under from the Office of the Mayor. I need a motion on Item 3, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Okay? Any comments or questions on those items? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now I have some items I'd like to move up to the front, so people won't necessarily have to sit through some of the business proceedings. Let's see. Meg, you wanna talk about Item 8, K2?
I do. Let me get to my agenda here.
Okay.
8A...
Halloween celebration.
Okay, 8K, I'm sorry. Page 25. Let me get to where I need to be. 8K is the resolution requesting a revocable permit for the Ghoul's Gone Wild Parade. This will be the fourth annual, I believe, event. It will be held on October 23rd in downtown Oklahoma City, begins in Midtown and ends at the Triangle just outside of the Old Opusco Building. It is a fabulous event. It's...
It's bigger and better every year.
Grown every single year. Incredibly great floats, wonderful entertainment. At the Triangle, at the end of the parade, there are food and music and all sorts of opportunities for people to enjoy. But the streets are lined from Midtown down to the Triangle. It's been a tremendous success.
And be ready for anything.
And be ready for anything, but it is relatively family-friendly. And so, it really...
Nice disclaimer, Meg. I like that.
It is a great event, and I would move approval for the permit.
And we're very proud to have it in Oklahoma City. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All right, cast your votes, and that passed unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bill, thank you all very much. Item 8K3, Pete, you wanna move that one to the front?
Yes, I'd like to move that to the front. It's the Rebuilding Together Seventh Annual Construction Derby. It's a really fun event. It will be Sunday, the 10th of October. It's really a nice, very, very nice, family entertainment event. It's kind of like the Soapbox Derby on steroids. It really is a great event, and I think there's some folks here that would like to tell us a little bit about it too, also.
Okay?
Hi, I'm Carrie Williams Foster from Rebuilding Together Oklahoma City, and this is John McCarron. He is one of our board members. Sorry. And as Pete said, we have a construction derby. It's one of our larger fundraisers of the year. It is a soapbox derby like the Boy Scouts have for adults. We're passing out some folders. They have brochures about our...they show pictures of some of the cars and have our sponsors listed, just some information. It's on Sunday, October 10th, and we're requesting that we be able to close off. It's on 5th Street between Walker and Chartel in downtown Oklahoma City, and all the...it's free to the public. We have a kids' area with all kinds of kids' activities. We have an antique car show, and a bunch of stuff going on, so we hope that everybody in this room comes out. And all the proceeds go to benefit Rebuilding Together Oklahoma City, which is a nonprofit that provides repairs and modifications to low-income senior citizens' homes. And this is our 20th year in existence, and we just appreciate your support.
Appreciate it very much. Pete, you wanna make a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Good luck with the event. Thank you very much for putting it on. Move on to Item 4. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 14th, and Item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 31st.
Mayor. May I ask that since we have addressed the previous permits, there's one more that is NK and the Deep Deuce Music Festival?
Sure. You wanna talk about that one first?
And I believe Ms. Sharifa Smith is here from the Deep Deuce Business Association.
Can we bring Sharifa up? Is that all right?
And so would you like to come up, Ms. Smith?
Good morning. Morning, Council. Mayor. My name is Sharifa Smith. I'm the Chair of the Deep Deuce Business Association. We're sponsoring our first annual music festival. We're very excited about it. It's October 9th, which is a Saturday, from noon until 7 o'clock. On this particular day, throughout the day, we're gonna have bands playing. We have 10 bands lined up. It's a free public event. We'll have food from the local restaurants in Deep Deuce, serving and selling food. We'll also have other vendors that will have tables there displaying something that they're selling. We have several people that are selling jewelry, purses, bags, things of that nature. We'll also have Anita Arnold. She wrote a book about Deep Deuce history. She's gonna be there doing a book signing and selling her book.
Terrific. Sharifa, thank you for putting that event on, and good luck with the restaurant business.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I say that Sharifa has been a very strong stimulus for the revitalization of the Deep Deuce Business Association, or at least beginning, starting the Deep Deuce Business Association. It's a clear testament of someone who is from Oklahoma City, left Oklahoma City, and saw a reason to come back to Oklahoma City, and her and her husband has worked very hard in putting together new events for the Deep Deuce area and the Sage Restaurant, and of course now they have the blues, rhythm and blues jazz room that's attached to the restaurant. And I think this is just a good testament of how hard-working people can revitalize an area. And I think that the Deep Deuce Music Festival is going to be a fantastic event, and it's just gonna be the beginning of memories of what the great fame and the great musicians that have been through the Deep Deuce area in the past. And so we want to thank you for your return to Oklahoma City and all that you're giving to the city as far as the Deep Deuce Business Association, you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharifa. You'll make a motion on 8K1, Skip?
Move it.
Okay. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. All right, now to Item 4. This is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 14th and approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 31st. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to Item 5. This is a request for uncontested continuance.
Mr. Mayor, there are several this morning outside of the one that's listed on Item 8Q1 and 2. On page 20, page 20, under Item 8A2, PUD 1223, the applicant has requested that this item be withdrawn. On to page 21, Item 8A6, SPUD 573, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the October 12th meeting. And then Item 8B, PC 10260, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the October 26th meeting. Then under page 24, with Item 8I1, Item E2301, North Pennsylvania, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. Item I, 320 Southwest 23rd, we ask that that be stricken. The owner's removed. And Item J, 324 Southwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has removed. Then moving to Page 8, or to Item 8JI, Item D, 1132 North McKinley, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 1019 North Virginia Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 2016 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We're gonna rework for additional violations. Item K, 2237 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 1512 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We're gonna rework for additional violations. And then moving to Page 25, Item T, 2533 Southwest 55th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Over at the Council Meeting, convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items.
A second. Mayor, I have a question on Item 8, on A1, on 5A1. I see Dennis is here. At some extent, it's just a comment. I was recently in a meeting with some people, Eastern Oklahoma County folks, that are very interested in seeing Choctaw Road developed as, you know, the old east bypass thing was pretty well shot down basically by people south of I-40 and the East Norman area, that whole area, but the people that live on the north end of it from the Turnpike all the way south to Choctaw Road are interested in seeing if Choctaw Road can't be utilized for that. And I didn't realize this was coming up this quicker. I would've already talked to you about it, but is there anything that's gonna happen in this particular contract that would interfere with that? They're trying to get state money. At the meeting, I told them we had all but a mile of the portion that they're talking about in the 2007 bond issue. I think we're like one mile, the first mile in Oklahoma City, south from...
You know, ODOT is going to rebuild that interchange there at Choctaw and I-40.
Right.
And it will involve a work on Choctaw Road for about, probably about a mile north and south of that. And then this will tie onto the north end of that.
That's why we're picking the 34...that's why this mile's first.
Right. And then we've got another mile south, I think, from 74th to 89th. So there will wind up being four miles there on Choctaw Road that'll be improved.
Okay. Okay. That's good enough. We'll talk again, though, because I probably should've already got you involved in this kind of little ad hoc group that's talking about trying to do that east bypass, at least from the Turnpike to 40.
Okay. All right, ready to vote the MFA?
I have got a couple of questions on this. On A3, which is a street project to improve 120 seconds between council and county line, and it's sort of an extension of an existing project we have going on right now between Brockwell and Council. And in that particular project, we encountered some significant delays because of utility relocation processes, and I would encourage the consulting engineer with the supervision of our Public Works Department to be particularly diligent on locating, correctly locating the utilities that are in the way. And then I also would encourage the utilities responsible for the pipes and cables that we are having to relocate to be more responsive to the city's request to do that work. There've been some long delays out there. They've been very frustrating to the adjacent property owners, and I hope we could minimize those kind of things in the future. What is the timing on this project, Dennis?
We're probably looking at a 14, 15-month design time, so I'm guessing the first part of 2012.
So it takes a little over a year, then, for a consulting engineer to design one mile of road?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. On B, it has to do with some parking meter arrangements, and these are the automatic or credit card operations that we have at several locations downtown. And I guess my question is maybe a double question. Are they cost-effective? Do we realize a positive return on our investment there? And if they are, are we planning to expand the system to cover all our meters?
I believe Copt is doing a study on those at this time to evaluate the parking situation.
I know it's very convenient for the citizens.
It's the convenience that we're providing is actually more than what we do. Obviously, people show up and they wanna park downtown and they don't have to change. It's frustration for them. So it's a convenience.
And I've had people comment on the benefit. They really appreciate the ability to not have to fumble around, walk into stores trying to get change.
It's a trade-off. To some people, they're intimidating. They come up and they don't know exactly what, and so once you're used to them, I think they become a convenience.
But I would think that would probably be a process over time. People would become used to them.
I believe that's true.
Technology is a step in the right direction. Anyway, if it is a good system, I would encourage the city to consider expanding it because it is a convenience to our citizens. And ultimately, I think if it works well, it might have the possibility of reducing our costs. Anyway, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Ready to vote the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC MFA, convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There is one item. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this item on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Mayor, I have a couple of things if I could.
Okay.
I'd like to speak about 6N and O, and also AQ.
Anybody else? All right, Meg, you wanna get started?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Mayor. Item 6N is a resolution that's approving some grant funding from the Federal Historic Preservation Fund that will allow our city to put on a historic... Preservation Fund that will allow our city to put on a historic preservation expo scheduled for August 19th and 20th of 2011. And this expo is designed to coincide with major rework that we're doing on the historic preservation guidelines. And will provide an opportunity for workshops and seminars and be a really great platform to educate our citizens about the changes that we've made in those preservation guidelines and standards.
Okay.
And the second, 6O, is sort of a companion piece. And it's a resolution that would approve our sponsorship of a neighborhood preservation station day. And this is scheduled to be held this year on October 23rd at 2721 North Walker. Architect Brian Fitzsimmons has generously donated his office space. It's located right between the Jefferson Park and Paseo neighborhoods. And our citizens may remember that within the last couple of meetings, we've approved a number of items that can be administratively approved by our staff. And citizens will be able to go to this location and work with our staff and receive administrative approvals for things to be done right on the spot. It really should improve and help communicate with our citizens and really improve the process for doing repair work on their homes. So Catherine, you're here. Would you like to say anything further, or is that sufficient? Great. Well, I thank you. Russell, thank you for all the work that your department's done. And Catherine, thank you specifically for the attention to bringing these codes and guidelines into a way that our citizens can really work with. So we appreciate that very much. Item 6AQ, I see Liz Eichman here, but I wanted to also recognize the contributions of the Kirkpatrick Family Fund for the work that they've done in executive development of our police department. It's a wonderful program, and you've been so supportive for so many years and very positive for our city. And the Kirkpatrick Family Fund does so many wonderful things in our community, but assisting the city to help provide assistance with executive training of our police department is really significant. So thank you, Liz, for being here, and thank you for all you do.
That is a great program. Gary, item W?
Thank you, Mayor. Although this is a street widening project, it appears the Water Trust wants to put a new 42-inch line down before we widen the road. Is that what it is, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be the fix to our pressure problems?
Partially.
Will this be the first time we see some pressure addressed, pressure issues addressed? And if so, what are we, how long are we talking about?
Well, each piece you put in, you're going to add more to. You provide relief to the system. And so we've had a number of things we've done over the years, and this is another piece on that. The 42-inch line, one completed, should provide significant assistance and relief in that area.
Okay.
But this is just a piece of it. That's my partial answer. That's why I said partially, because until the entire thing is in place.
Well, I applaud that we're going to lay the line before we widen the street instead of afterwards, so.
It's kind of had to be a better secret.
But do we have an idea when we'd actually start laying a line there? And I know it's going to be a ways off, but.
I think we're looking at next summer, beginning construction.
Next summer?
Summer 2011.
On the paving or on the water line?
On the water line.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Skip?
Mayor, I would like to comment on K and Z as far as Dennis's presence to give an update on Z. But on K, I think this is something that we should be proud of, is that is the Oklahoma City's partnership with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation in reference to a grant that provides three miles of bicycle routes at Oklahoma Christian University as far as the campus. And the trail will serve the neighborhoods and connect the City of Edmund Trail Systems to the Oklahoma City Bike Route along Eastern Avenue. And I don't know what the process was in reference to these funds and the city's participation with the Department of Transportation, but they're federal funds. And I would just like to ask Dennis if you know, is it possible for any other areas within the city as it relates to these type of funds to force to participate with projects, or is that not your department?
We've actually, Councilman, used those federal funds to enhance a number of our bike trail programs. We've accessed those funds many times in the past, and this is another time where we've had it, from Lake Hefner Trails to other trails have been utilized, these federal funds.
Well, I think this is a great project, and as much as we are seeing, I mean, the problems that we now see with a lot of the street bike riding, that designated trails, and especially where it connects to campuses such as Oklahoma Christian University, and I'm just thinking at Oklahoma City University and some of the other, you know, schools within the inner cities, that these are great projects to provide safety for bike riders and walkers, so.
Councilman, President O'Neill from Oklahoma Christian was very aggressive in getting all the players together and pushing forward to make application for those funds.
Okay, all right. Great project. Your Honor, a comment on the bicycle trails in general. I've had some calls from constituents where they complain about bicyclists not using the trails adjacent to the streets, and I understand they don't have to use the trails. But as we go forward with this construction program we have for additional trails, both on these kind of projects and with perhaps street projects, I wonder if there's something we need to look at in terms of the design or construction of those trails that might make them more attractive to bicyclists? If there's something we're doing that is, you know, detrimental as they're using those trails, I think it's unfortunate because they provide, to me, a much safer alternative than riding on the streets. And I think, you know, we have an opportunity here as we go forward with these major projects that we have on our agenda, to maybe review one more time what we're doing out there to see if we can make it more attractive to bicyclists.
We have put together a bicycle safety task force, and Councilman Sam Bowman is working on those issues. There are some cyclists who enjoy the trails, and there are others that almost insist that they be on the streets.
I understand that.
Which allows us the opportunity to say, do we want to build bike lanes, you know, on some of those specific streets? And perhaps do some widening projects so that they can, you know, share the road more easily. I don't know that there's an easy answer, but I think we can do better than we're doing.
Well, I think the bicycle lanes would be a significant improvement, a real bicycle lane, not just something painted on the street, where we widen the streets and maybe we need to look at our new construction as we go forward. It would be difficult to go back, expensive to go back and add it now. But perhaps as we go forward with some of these major arteries improvements, we've added sidewalks over the years to those projects, perhaps we need to look at adding a bicycle lane as well because.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, Project 180 comes with a lot of bicycle lanes, but that's not really the part of the city we're talking about with where we had the tragedies this summer. And it would take kind of a policy shift, you know, by the council to say that uncertain, you know, arterial roads in the rural areas, we're going to look at creating specific bike lane opportunities for them. It's something that I'm hoping that the task force will come forward with some sort of recommendation for us to consider going forward.
Look, I'm glad to hear about the task force, and I encourage them to work closely with the bicycle community to get their input.
Yeah, they're very engaged.
Great.
There are a lot of people wanting to kind of make sure that doesn't happen again.
I know that wasn't exactly what Skip wanted to talk about.
Yeah, Larry?
Just a comment, Pat. The Trails Advisory Committee has been talking about the trail usage for years. I happen to sit on that, Sam Bowman sits on that. And what you have is a fundamental problem. Our trail system has been designated as a multipurpose trail system, which allows bikers, walkers, joggers to all share the trail. And as the mayor has talked about, there is a part of the cycling community that doesn't want to share the trails from anybody. And so therefore, to reach the speeds that they want to reach, they go ride on city streets, and that's what you're, the problem you're dealing with.
The bicyclists, I think I'd rather contest with a pedestrian than I would a truck, but it seems like I'm not much of, I'm sort of a coward.
Skip?
Yes. There's one other project, Z. And, you know, over the past couple of years, we've been just swamped with calls in reference to the conditions of Hefner Road. And I think Dennis has done a yeoman's job in reference to putting together a project that will bring some relief to the citizens in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City that utilize Hefner Road. And I would just like for Dennis just to give us a little update in reference to the project and how it came about and where you think it's going to go.
Councilman, we became aware that ACOG is going to have a surplus or carryover of federal funds from this year. And of course, the federal fiscal year ends on September 30th, and we felt it fairly easy to put some plans together for this seven-mile stretch, actually six miles, of Hefner Road. Not widening, just resurfacing what's rebuilding the roadway, what's there, not increasing the footprint. So we wouldn't get into any environmental issues. ODOT was very helpful in helping us clear those, any environmental issues that came up. ACOG's Technical Review Committee approved the amendment of the transportation plan a couple of weeks ago, and it'll go before their board on Thursday for final approval. And if it does make, reach approval, then ODOT will schedule it for letting probably shortly after the first of the year.
Well, I'm sure that the citizens in that, that utilize Hefner Road will be very, very grateful for, you know, this forthcoming project because it is in dire need of some services as far as resurfacing. And I want to thank you, because I know you've been swamped with a lot of calls and had to deal with a lot of me. So I thank you for this project and the Department of Transportation and ACOG. Thank you.
Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. Put us on to the concurrence docket, which is lengthier than usual today.
Lot of school activity.
That's right. City manager pointing out there's a lot of Maps for Kids activity in the consent docket today.
Second.
Comments or questions on the consent docket? I'm sorry, the concurrence docket. All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with item 8A1. It's the beginning of a series of zoning cases. This one's in Ward 7. The address is 715 North Martin Luther King Avenue. It's currently R3 medium-density residential and C4 general business districts, and it would become an R2 medium-low-density residential district. Skip?
I believe.
All right, any comments or questions on item 8A1? All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. I believe when we went through the agenda earlier, we have seen that item 8A2 is withdrawn. Is that correct, Francis? All right. Puts us on to item 8A3. It's a zoning case in Ward 3. The address is 900 South MacArthur Boulevard. It's currently I2 moderate industrial district, and it would become a planned unit development. Larry?
Yes, is the applicant present? Not having the applicant present, I'd like to move for a deferral.
Okay. We have a motion for a deferral.
October 12th.
October 12th will be two weeks from today. Any other comments or questions on the motion for a deferral? All right, cast your votes. That item is deferred two weeks. Item 8A4 is in Ward 5. The address is 400 Southwest 87th Street. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a new planned unit development. Anyone have any information on this one that's been passed along from staff? Ready to vote on this? Any comments that we need to know about?
This is an expansion of the credit union. It's no protest. It was a pretty good case.
Okay. All right, well, let's vote then on item 8A4. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8A5 is in Ward 2. The address is 6200 Northwest Grand Boulevard. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. And this is for the construction of the Whole Foods.
Yeah, Sam talked to me before this, and he's in favor of this, so.
My second. All right, cast your votes on item 8A5, pass unanimously. Item 8A6 has been deferred two weeks until October 12th. That one's in Ward 2. The item 8A7 is in Ward 3. The address is 815 South Morgan Road. It's currently I1 light industrial, and it would become a simplified planning and development. Larry?
Yes, Dennis, if you can forward, please, and just give the council a very brief overview of what's planned here.
This is going to be a truck car wash. My name's Dennis Box. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. The property is presently zoned I1, and we worked both with your planning commissioner and the staff. And I want to say thank you to both Buck Irwin and also the staff. We had some issues on curb cuts and traffic, worked those out to staff satisfaction. And this will be a truck wash. And my client is here, if you all have any questions. They have truck washes around the country, and they think this is the appropriate location, being next to the truck facilities that are in your ward.
Every truck in North America is at that intersection.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on the side. How did you happen to get the planning commission to include a pole sign as opposed to the monument sign?
When they looked at it, our sign, if you'll note, is in the 35-foot range. Most of the signs out there are 55 to 60. And from a traffic safety standpoint, when we got through with the argument, they agreed that when you're a trucker and you're high up, a monument sign's not going to do much good, especially with the other signs that are 50 to 55 feet.
I have no questions unless the council does. I'd like to move for approval.
Second. All right, we're voting on item 8A7. Cast your votes, pass unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
Item 8B has been deferred four weeks until October 26th. Item 8C, some housekeeping from the clerk's office, and this is the final hearing on this. Francis, we good to go as far as you're concerned? All right. We have a second?
Say.
All right, vote on item 8C, pass unanimously, 6O. Item 8D has to do with our HP guidelines. Russell is here if anyone has any questions. If not, we can move forward with it.
This is the final hearing, so I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8D? Russell, anything you want to say before we vote?
Are you on D1?
We are on 8D1. Good point, thank you. We have two items here to pass, item 8D1. All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously.
Mayor, if I could, this requires the emergency.
Okay.
We don't have enough people for the emergency. Okay. Can we hold on to this for just a second?
Yeah, we'll come back to it when it comes back. But we do need to vote on item 8D2. You want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve item 8D2.
All right, cast your votes, and that one pass unanimously.
I also need the emergency on that one.
All right. Item 8D has to do with our continuing to look at our water fees. We've been, I think, fully informed on this one.
Okay, I thought they both needed it.
We have someone to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Debbie Bohannon? Thank you for your patience, and we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Debbie Bohannon, 1920 Northwest 31st. I'm in Sam Bowman's District, Ward 2. I'm just here to, again, to oppose the rate increase and call attention to the fact that I appreciate the council opening with prayer. There are many cities across this country who don't do that, and they don't, they're not afforded the blessings that we are. I attribute that to my God, my Judeo-Christian God, who sent some lovely rain this week, and I'm just wondering how much he charged you for that? Nothing? Good. That's the point. I'm sure somebody sat in a board meeting somewhere and said, only $5, only $5 for the waste management increase or for the sanitation increase last year. Only $5 here, only $5 there. Only $5 for me is a week's worth of milk and bread. Only $5 is why I don't go to Bricktown, because I'm not going to pay somebody $5 to park my car to go patronize businesses. And I hope the council's aware of that. There's many people. In fact, most of the people I speak with in my circle of friends feel the same way. So it's kind of biting off your nose despite your face when it comes to that thing. A lot of things downtown that people would take more part in, except for the parking expenses. But anyway, I'm just here as a citizen representative to oppose this increase. It does not allow me to determine my uses. It's a base increase. And while cities do that for water, they did it last year for sanitation, and ONG raised theirs, and OGN E raised theirs. So we're being nickel and dime to death. And I'm just here to ask you to use the resources, the many, many, many resources we have as a city, to raise your funding through those resources that we've entrusted you with rather than putting it on our backs.
Thank you for coming down. Jim, it might be a good opportunity for you to talk about how we recoup our costs from the Water Trust and the idea of not being able to move dollars from one part of the city government.
Sure. The water utilities is a standalone enterprise, and so anything that's generated or any of of the cost of running the utility, any of the capital improvements done with the utilities, the 42-inch water lines to get more water out in Councilman Ward's, or Councilman Mars' Ward 1 area, the sewer line replacements we do, the expansion of the wastewater treatment plants to make sure we've got an adequate supply of, of water to meet the demands of the city, all those are paid by the rates that we have. And the increase, by the way, is, is a dollar fifty-four. It's, it's 238, it's now $5. And we are and have been very competitive when we compare to those rates to other cities around, and we, it's overall fairly inexpensive cost of water. I do know that to some people, every dollar on their monthly budget is an impact, and we're very cognizant of that as we set the rates and have been. We're very careful to make sure that we, we, we take a look at that to make sure that we're not, or we're very sensitive to how we impact people in, in the lower usage categories and the people that are struggling to make their ends meet.
And I remember when I was on council a few years back, at that time, and our policy was really to not do it every year but to wait a few years, and then there would be quite a jump. And we made the policy decision that it seemed that people were more preferred to have a slight increase each year than to have a larger increase every three or four years. And so that was a council decision at the time and one that we could certainly revisit going forward. But some of the feedback I get is, didn't we just raise the rates last year? Didn't we raise it the year before? Well, yeah, that's the point. I mean, we're trying to do small incremental raises, you know, each year as opposed to having a giant raise that we think might cause even more discomfort. But it's certainly something the council can revisit in, in one of our workshops going forward if there's any, anyone that thinks we should. But I know citizens are concerned anytime the rates go up, and especially if you're talking about an existing service. In other words, the water doesn't taste any better, doesn't come out any faster, your rate just went up. And, and I understand the frustration of that. Typically, when, when, when we have an increased service level, you'd like to think you're getting something out of it. But the, the bottom line is, the cost of delivering water does go up, whether you want it to or not. And, and I, I take some comfort in the fact that our rates are competitive with other cities around the country. In fact, probably on a little bit of the lower end. And a lot of that has to do with previous generations and their ability to gather water sources for us. So from a water standpoint, from a quality and quantity, we're very, very good shape. But there's always a frustration, and we're feeling some of that from the council. Yes, Skip?
Mayor, I think that a lot of times people fail to realize that it's not just about the taste of the water, but it's about the, the infrastructure also. And I think that, you know, when you, when you have a city and the, the infrastructure that we presently have has to be updated, that, you know, the funding sources for the infrastructure is, is part of this cost. And so, and that is to provide a better service and a longevity for the convenience of our citizens. And so I think sometimes people have a misunderstanding that this is all about just the water that you drink, but it's also about the totality of the services that's provided, that, that has to move the water from one place to the other and the infrastructure that's necessary for that.
Absolutely. And, you know, the way the, the funding is set up by the city, we, even if we wanted to take a dollar from the airport and put it into the water, we couldn't do that. I mean, we're set up in separate trusts. These are, these are specific accounts, and so the money that goes into the Water Department stays in the Water Department and vice versa.
Yeah, I'd say one more thing about the Water Department. It's been a long time since we've had water rationing in Oklahoma City. We have water supply because of our, the, the ability of the Water Trust to look forward in years past to water supply. We've not ever had, to my knowledge, had to turn down a company who would provide new jobs in Oklahoma City because we couldn't provide them water. So I think the citizens, in addition to getting fresh, clean, some of the best water in the country to drink, we also have a situation where we don't have water rationing, and we have the capacity to accommodate additional citizens and new businesses as they come into Oklahoma.
Okay. And sir, yeah, please come on up. We will need your name and address for the record.
I'm Phil Hughes. I'm destined to speak a little bit later, but I think this points out a larger problem though, and that is that we've got a lot of money draining to high, to high salaries in the suburbs, and we've got to repair the middle city. And here at a time when we've got deflation in America, this isn't a 5% in, or what is it, $5 a month? Was that it? This isn't, this isn't an increase.
Dollar something a month.
Dollar something a month. Okay, this isn't just that. This is actually a $40.
$3.54. Okay, $3.54 a month.
$3.54 per month. So that'd be about $50 a year. This isn't a $50 a year increase. This is a hundred or $150 a year increase. We've got to start repairing the middle city and whatever. Who's the contractor that's going to do these water? Do they live up in North Edmund in one of those half-million-dollar homes or, I mean, are they, is that money going to stay in the city?
I don't know that that's relevant where the, the person who's getting the contract lives.
Well, it is relevant that we keep the city from imploding due to decay.
If your, if your point is that we need to invest in inner-city infrastructure, I think we were well on record of believing that, that we're, we're with you.
Yeah, but in general, the infla, the tendencies toward more and more favor the distant suburbs, which are not doing anything to solve the problem with crime.
Well, I think you bring up a good point. As the city expands, there are capital costs, and sometimes those costs are, are spread out through amongst all the citizens in the city. And those that might be part of the existing system may not necessarily feel like they need to be a part of the expansion of the system. However, typically, the, the businesses, the, the developers who are expanding the size of the water are involved in the cost upfront. I mean, so in general, the citizens in the inner city aren't subsidizing the expansion of the city on the end. And as far as bringing in the suburban communities, they're paying their own way. I mean, so we really do whatever we can to make sure that whatever new customers come into the system, they pay their share of the cost so that the citizens of Oklahoma City get the best value.
So that, they pay the added cost of that pipeline going out in suburbs, and we actuarially only know that.
In general, that's the, that's the theory we work upon, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, we have just remodeled two homes, and I wrote Jim Couch about it over at 43rd Military in any of you willing to buy, and we put a lot of money into them. And then with the AIG issue and the fact that we still have drug dealers in the neighborhood and nothing's being done about this issue that, that I can see, there's slow improvement. But we have lost $20,000 between those two homes. And the, the situation is, you've got a lot of good people in Oklahoma City, and they're just getting worn down because the people get together and they say, well, we're going to make money downtown, so we're going to put in a train system down there, and then they'll raise our property value. It doesn't do anything for the city. Thank you.
I do want to correct. It is 491 the first year, and less than subsequent years, I was looking at the wastewater charge only. So it is 491.
Okay, so a $5 was pretty close.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ready to vote?
We need a motion.
Motion?
Move approval.
Second. Voting on item 8E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
May we go back and take care of the emergency now that we have Jake Morris back?
All right. We have, okay, we have the emergency on this one as well. So there are seven of us here. How about, first, the emergency on item 8E?
We got it.
Okay, cast your votes. Need seven. There you go. Gary's here. All right. And now let's go back and get the emergency on item 8D1.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item, the emergency on item 8D2?
No emergency.
No emergency there. Okay. Then we're good to go on item 8F?
Yes.
And this has to do with some changes in the Internal Revenue Law, Internal Revenue Service laws, and some adjustments in the retirement pays.
Move the item.
All right, any comments or questions? This is a public hearing regarding item 8F. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8G has to do with some fees for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Again, this was, it came out of the budget process, look at revisiting the fishing and boating permits to, to keep the fish hatch real.
All right, cast your votes. We're voting on item 8G. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a wastewater issue. Marsha Slaughter is here.
As she comes up.
Presentation.
We have an industrial waste ordinance that we've had in place. It's actually required by federal law to have such, such an ordinance in place, and it has to be reviewed periodically. And so we're going through a five-year review of this ordinance. We meet with the different industrial waste generators and have some public hearings and such, and this is the result of that process and other things. Marsha?
Thank you. As the city manager, thank you. Mayor, councilors, an honor to be here as always. The wastewater pretreatment ordinance is required by the federal law that produces the wa, that allows us to operate our wastewater treatment plants, the Clean Water Act. We use the ordinance and are required to, to assure that the industries that we serve produce a waste that can be treated by our wastewater treatment plants. Federal procedures require that we update the ordinance every five years. Interestingly, about 40% of our wastewater comes from the 2,000 industrial customers that we have. The customers vary from metal finishers to restaurants. The ordinance changes particularly that are generally improving in nature. Copper, lead, mercury, selenium, and silver concentrations will be decreased. We have to do that to protect the rivers that we discharge to. We believe that all of our existing customers meet those requirements already. Therefore, there's, there is very little impact. We do not anticipate a specific cost increase for the customers. Can we answer any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're voting on item 8H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I1? All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K, I believe we voted already on item 8K1, 2, and 3, which moves us to item 8L. This is a revocable permit to host the head of the Oklahoma Regatta.
Move the item.
Is there anyone here representing this event? All right, comments or questions on item 8L? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is some annual housekeeping involving the general record building.
Move the item.
All right, any comments or questions on item 8M?
Yeah, I do have one real quick. Are we still in discussions with the state? And if so or not, are we still open for other offers coming forward?
We are not currently in negotiations with the state. It does not appear that the tourism option is viable at this point in time, and we are pursuing others to, to other opportunities. Have, have shown the building to, to a few interested parties recently, but we don't have anything on the line at this point.
All right, voting on item 8M. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, cast your votes. Item passed unanimously. Item 8O, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8P, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8Q is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak?
It's been stricken.
Oh, it has?
Yes.
All right. So cross off item 8Q. Moves us on to item 9. Have a couple of items from council to consider. First of all, we're on the final hearing, and I think some amendments have come forward on Councilman McAtee's issue, and this is, has to do with noise. Larry, we ready to go on this?
I am, if the council is ready.
Okay, well, we have some amendments that have come forward. How we want to deal with the amendments?
Yeah, I have a question. I believe in our last week's discussion, the noise-sensitive zone section, which is 348D, I believe, included a protection for hotels and motels. And I don't see it in this version, and I wonder if it was, I have the right version or if that was stricken, because I felt that was an important part of this ordinance. We go forward to try to make Oklahoma City a destination city. I think we owe it to the visitors to give them the opportunity to have a motel or hotel that's not bothered by undue noise during the nighttime hours. I felt that was an important part of it, and it's not here now, and I wondered why it was taken out or if I just don't have the right copy.
Cindy Richard was here in the back just a second ago. Let me check and see where she is. The, have the amendments here.
Page.
No, thank you. She knows the answer to that. Let me check. Here she is.
My apologies. I was deep in a conversation, I'm sorry. What was the question?
Why, why the hotel.
Okay.
Motel protection was taken out of the noise-sensitive zone?
It wasn't taken out. We have an amendment that's been presented that will have to be voted on today, and as you might remember, we talked about it at the last council meeting. A gentleman from State Bridge Suites came to the first presentation to council and indicated that there was an issue with a nearby hub, I think. And so we were asked to look at the issue of hotel-motel and whether notice could be required. Staff has indicated, and management has indicated, that requiring notice on application for a noise permit is impractical and puts a lot of burden not only on staff but also on the applicant. So we were looking for another way to address the issue, and we found the noise-sensitive zone, which is kind of a novelty the way it's currently written, because the effective hours for the noise-sensitive zone are during the nighttime, when most of the locations that are listed in the current ordinance are already closed. So we looked at putting hotel-motel there but also trying to make this effective. So the amendment that we have before you, it adds hotel-motel to the list of things like hospitals, schools, churches, nursing homes, courthouse houses, and we added those in and said that, okay, let's make it effective during their hours of operation. And so then the course of discussion that came up at the last council meeting was, well, who's that going to impact? Who can all the complainants be for that sort of thing? And so we went back and looked at it again to address your concerns. I think Josh is going to pull up the amendment so you can easier see it. And so what we added for this time is that the noise disturbance for those areas, it's within a 500-foot zone of all of those different kinds of facilities, will be prohibited. You can see in bold the language there, prohibited during the facility's hours of operation, and noise permits shall not be issued for such hours during the facility's hours of operation. And then a little bit farther down, you see this subsection is intended to protect only the above-listed facilities, and for enforcement, the complaining party must be an authorized representative of the facility, including but not limited to the owner, operator, manager, or director. And so we've, instead of being a 24-hour prohibition, we've limited it to that facility's hours of operation, and somebody in charge at that facility has to be the one to make a complaint if there's one to be made. So that's the newest language to address your concerns from last council meeting. And again, this is a policy call, and it's entirely up to you. If you decide to go with this amendment, though, this will have to be introduced and voted on today to add it to the other noise chapter amendments.
Okay, I'm very happy with this amendment. Thank you. I apologize for not seeing it as I went through the document. I do have one question. Hours of operation, hotel motel, that would be a 24-hour operation?
Yes, it would be.
A 24-hour, so they would be, they would have the ability to complain anytime during a 24-hour period?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Ready to vote?
Motion on the amendment.
Okay.
Move on the amendment.
First vote on the amendments, that's a motion on the amendments, the second. Any comments or questions from anyone? All right, cast your votes. Those amendments passed unanimously. And now, we're voting on item 8A1, I'm sorry, 8A2. This is the final hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Larry, thanks for your work on that. Item 9B is a final hearing. Councilman Kelly has brought this up. It's some uses of businesses on Northeast 23rd Street. Skip, any comments or questions here before we vote?
No, move it.
All right, anybody sign up to speak on this item? All right, well, let's go then. Item 9B, cast your votes, and it passes by a count of six to one. All right, items from council. Gary?
Yes.
Okay, Larry? Pete, anything today?
First of all, I wanted to comment on the appointment of the MAPS III Transit Committee. I appreciate that moving forward. There seems to be a lot of talk about the priorities with regard to what that committee ought to do, and I thought that this might be a good opportunity for me to weigh in on what I think they ought to be, and obviously, they're going to, it's going to be very bailiwick to make a decision. But there are so many things that have to fall in place in order for all these decisions about MAPS III to be made. I mean, the location of the convention center, the location of the hub, has a great deal to do, Project 180 has a lot to do with it. I don't want to see us rush to a decision about, for example, the location of the downtown trolley system without weighing fully all those other factors that may bear on it. We don't have the money to build the system today. I mean, it's a project, it's a down-the-line thing, and I'm glad to see the committee put in place now, because I think those things need to be discussed. But I certainly would want to be on record as asking for some patience with regard to making the final decisions, the end decision, when all these other things seem to me have to be in place to really make good decisions about where that trolley system goes. It seems to me the location of the convention center and the location of the hub, as I've moved forward in thinking about this, to me, the location of that hub and the hub itself has really become more important to me than the trolley system itself, because I've come to the conviction that that hub is going to be the key piece in the future of transportation for, the key building block in the future of transportation. And I think we ought to, I would hope we think of it that way, because I think the mayor pointed out at one time that the downtown trolley system, when you hook the hub to it, becomes the last unilateral piece that the city of Oklahoma City has to do before we can really go out and ask our neighbors in Edmond and Norman and Moore and Midwest City to come in with us to build a regional transportation system. Once that system is in place, then we've done all the things we need to do unilaterally to do it. The rest of it will take regional cooperation. And I think we just have to make sure that we are as right as we can be. There are other cities that are far ahead of us in the location and the design and all that, and we need to learn from what they've done, because I think this is a really great opportunity for, I think it may work, over the long run, it may work out to be one of the really prestige things that came out of MAPS III. But I think some patience, I really appreciate the committee. I think that was excellent, those choices are excellent. I didn't know all of them, but to the extent I do know them, I think those are very, very good choices. And I just would urge them to really try to take all these factors into consideration and not rush to the end decision with regard to the streetcar system, when it's so integral to all the, to how the convention center is going to work and how light rail may work someday, how passenger rail may work someday, where we ought to go with the bus system, I mean, all that. We have some really opportunities, it seems to me, to really make a good decision with regard to that. But I want to preface all that with how much I appreciate that committee being appointed now and the quality, I think, of the folks that you put on that committee are really very good, I think.
I agree with everything Councilman White has said. Just want to point out that as we are moving forward with Project 180, we have some contractual obligations to get those things done in a certain timeframe, and you know, if we can, there could be some cost-saving if we could identify the route and integrate that into Project 180. So, there's some trade-offs here, Councilman. Nothing you said is wrong at all.
Well, I understand that point. I do, I do understand that. But I, but I think in the long, in the long haul, those cost savings may not really be cost savings if we don't make the right decision with regard to
I agree.
where these other things go. It's too bad. It's kind of a
It's a problem.
A burden of blessings, almost. We've got the Project 180 going, and we've got, we've got the convention center, and we've got the hub, and it's, it's, it's almost like a burden of blessings. But I just, I urge patience in trying to figure those out, because I don't want to be looking back, or I won't be around looking back, but the rest of you will be, looking back 20 years from now and saying, if we'd have just taken it a little bit slower, we might have made a difference. And that's, that's my point.
Okay. Larry?
Could I just, let me give you a brief update on what happened at the last MAPS Oversight Committee on a couple of issues. A couple of weeks ago, in the council, you all expressed a desire to be kind of advocates for the senior health and wellness centers, and I shared that with the committee. The committee was in favor of that, passed along to staff. Staff brought a recommendation last week to begin the process of selecting a consultant who would look at where the wellness centers should be, what they should do, how they should be built, how they should be run, the total concept of the wellness centers. So, I think your wishes there are being moved forward in a very positive way. And Jim, I don't know if you want to comment on that or not?
No, I think you did a great job of conveying that message onto the Oversight Board and the Advisory Committee, and they responded, I think, very well.
So, I think you'll see some action taken there. The Trails Advisory Committee, at their last meeting, also indicated they thought that some work on the trails, since the trail master plan is in place, and we've identified where the trail expansion should go as part of MAPS III. I shared that with the Advisory Committee last week, and the Advisory Committee was in favor of asking staff to proceed with that. So, I think you'll see some work in the trails also get started in the next, you know, few weeks.
All right. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, if I could just very briefly, I had a really wonderful opportunity to meet yesterday with one of our lieutenants in the fire department, Lieutenant Dane Yaw. He's at Station 8 in Stockyards. And Dane is one of the firefighters that works with the National Disaster Search Dog Foundation. And he was there with his fabulous dog, Salsa, who's participated in all sorts of rescues. And it is a wonderful program. It was brought to Oklahoma City at no cost after the bombing. I mean, I really, the Oklahoma City bombing really brought to the forefront how incredibly successful dogs can be in helping to find both people living and also people that have been killed in this kind of disaster, and they respond all over the world. But we have a fabulous program here in Oklahoma City, and I just enjoyed learning a lot more about it.
Skip? All right. Pat?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right, city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we've got in the packet our year-end performance report for the leading for results. And today, Jason Fairbrush is going to give us a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation highlighting some items from that report. Jason?
Sir. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity this morning to share some of the information with you that's contained in your 2010 year-end performance report. This is the third report that we've prepared for council. It's very similar to the ones in the past in that the performance information in the report comes from department strategic business plans that are created, updated, reviewed regularly using the city's leading-for results process. I did want to mention that in your packet, you probably received two different documents. The first document is about 18 pages long. It's the color brochure-type report. This is the report itself. It contains detailed performance information for each of the progress indicators that align to each of the council priorities. And these progress indicators really are performance measures, really high-level performance measures, that help us as a city kind of gauge overall how we're responding to the priorities that are set by council. The second half of that report contains performance measure information more at the department level, and we've organized that by service area. So, you'll see some performance measures that are related to culture and recreation. You'll see some performance measures that are related to public safety and so forth. On the screen here, you can see the look of, the look of the report has changed a little bit. We actually formatted the report you have so that it's very similar to what is going to be available to citizens in early October. We've included a lot more charts and graphs. We've included some performance information in the call-out boxes. So, I just did want to mention that the format had changed quite a bit. The second document that you received is actually, looks like this, it's got a blue cover, and the title is supplement. And what you'll find in the supplement is actually every result and output measure for all city departments organized by program. And the thought here is this is really more of a reference guide for you than anything else. If, for example, you wanted to look and see other ways that the streets program and Public Works was measuring their performance, you could use this reference guide and see all the various measures that are included in that program. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get started with the information we were going to talk about this morning. And the first part of our presentation is going to focus mainly on those progress indicators that align to council priorities. We're not going to look at every one of them, but we do have several that we can look at. The first council priority is to preserve and grow trust in city government. And you can see there, we have three indicators. The first two, we're all very familiar with, the passage of the 2007 geo-bond authorization, the recent approval of MAPS III initiative. Those have both essentially been accomplished. And I did want to mention, the approval of the MAPS III initiative is actually an indicator that we've had aligned with the council priority and in department business plans were applicable since about 2007. And now, just here we are in FY10, actually being able to achieve that goal. So, some of the performance measures for the council priorities are very long-term focused. I just wanted to
Was this, is this June? When was the poll done?
On the satisfaction rating? Yeah, this is from our last citizen survey.
It was June of this year?
Which actually would have been August of last year.
August of '09?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. So, the data is, the satisfaction data is about a year old, but it's the data we reported for FY10 fiscal year. So, as you can see, the next measure there, in terms of growing citizen confidence, is just asking the citizens, the citizens, as part of our citizen survey, are they satisfied that the city is heading in the right direction? And you can see FY10 results were better than 2008, 2009, exceeded the target we had set for 2010. And so, as a result of that high level of performance for the next survey we do, we will ratchet that target up to about 85 percent.
When will that survey?
Probably going to be, what, August of, yeah, next summer, next summer.
What
Yes, sir.
What logic was used not to do a survey this August? Budget? Dollars?
This is a matter of, when we're eliminating positions, that, looking at that cost that we had associated with that, we felt like in principle that we should, you know, eliminate that as well at the same time. That's all it was.
I understand the surveys are very important, but it was a tough year.
No, I knew the answer. I just wanted the answer to go on, because I think that's an important thing. We had, over the last several years, done one on a regular basis in that summertime timeframe.
Right.
And if suddenly we had money today to do it, it would somewhat skew the results if we took the survey in November or December as opposed to when the previous ones were? Or is it not time-dependent?
I don't think it's time-dependent. We can talk to our consultant, the company that we use, on that. You know, I think the issue really was clearly a budget issue and the decision not to do it. The intent is we'll get right back on track, you know, going to next year and the future years. It's not to, you know, take that out, because it's an important part of the information that we get from our citizens.
How much money did we save by taking?
I believe the contract's $30,000.
Okay, the next priority, council priority, that we're going to look at has to do with financial sustainability. And in total, we have about four progress indicators that we look at on a regular basis regarding financial sustainability. The two that we have chose to look at this morning really have to do with development and the importance of trying to encourage development more within the inner loop or towards the center of the city, simply because, as we've discussed, development on the fringe area of the city can often cause additional drain on city resources such as police and fire and just the expense of getting the infrastructure out there. So, again, looking at a sustainable financial model in terms of development, the first measure over here on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see we look at the number of residential units built and occupied downtown. And in 2010, we came up short of our target. 29 residential units were actually built compared to a target of 129. It's probably not a surprise, just with the general slowdown that we experienced last year. I am aware that there are still some projects being considered for residential development downtown. Don't know that they would be built and occupied for reporting purposes for FY11, but we would expect this number to turn around fairly significantly in 2012. The other measure we look at is the percent of new development that occurs in the inner loop. For FY2010, we finished at 24 percent, again, slightly ahead of target. I did want to mention that this number does not include the square footage of the Devon Tower that's under construction. We kind of felt like for 2010 reporting purposes, we were so early on in the construction there that we did not include that in these totals. And we'll look at that again and see how we're going to report that in 2011. The next council priority looks at focusing on infrastructure, particularly streets, bridges, water and wastewater systems. And the indicators that we have really do focus mainly on street conditions. And again, from our citizen survey, we just asked the citizens, how satisfied are you with city streets? And you can see the 2010 results are shy of the target there of 40 percent. But I do think it's worth pointing out, especially since this is an area where we typically do score a little bit low in, there is somewhat of an upward trend there. Looking at the past two years, you can see that 2010 was actually the highest we've scored in the last two years. The other measure we wanted to look at in terms of focusing on infrastructure also has to do with city streets, and that's the pavement condition index. And this is, again, is a measure that we really had in place for 2007, just got to the point where we could start reporting on it in 2009. Essentially, the pavement condition index is a score of 1 to 100 that's assigned to city streets, with, of course, a score of one probably being the worst possible street you could imagine, and a 100 being a new street. And the average score for city streets, based on the last available data, is 67. And I do know that Public Works is in the process of updating that PCI number now. The next priority is the quality of public transportation. We have about five indicators that we look at to help monitor the progress we're making towards improving the quality of public transportation. The two measures that we have here for you this morning are pretty operational in nature. We have the number of passengers per service hour. You can see that in 2010, we actually exceeded the previous two years' performance, finishing at 18 passengers per hour, and the department has adjusted that target upward. The next measure on the right-hand side of your screen there is, again, comes from our citizen survey, and that's where we just asked citizens how satisfied they are with public transportation. And you can see that in 2010, we did finish a little bit shy of the target. But again, if you look at the trend, we do have a gradual upward trend there and improvement from 2009. The next council priority is to expand economic development initiatives. And we have a table here for you with four different measures that we look at in terms of economic development. The first one there being the number of new jobs resulting from economic incentives. You can see that in 2010, we exceeded our target and did considerably better than we performed the previous year. Economic incentives are managed through the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, and of course, you know, are made possible from the Gulp bonds. So, it's actually been just within the last couple of years that we've been able to start reporting on this data. But I would mention, and as many of you are aware, the jobs that are created from economic incentives, part of that criteria is that they need to pay, the jobs must pay 20 percent greater than the MSA average wage. So, when we're looking at these jobs that you see before you, these are probably what we would consider, you know, quality jobs. The next two measures, looking at increases in per capita income, increases in property values, those are two measures that we probably have a little bit less control on, over than what we, measures we normally report. But again, we do feel they're good indicators of economic development. Increase in per capita income, you can see the target was 3 percent. We finished right near the target on that. Increase in property values, our target was 6 percent. For the last two years, we've slightly exceeded that. I will mention that in terms of property values, this snapshot was took pretty on in 2010. So, we do expect FY11 results to be less than that, probably, you know, closer to the 2 percent range. But again, still increasing, which is much better than other areas of the country have fared. And then, the last measure in the table here comes from the Department of Airports, and they measure the number of cities served by nonstop flights. An idea there is, you know, the more nonstop flights we can have, hopefully, the easier it is to do business in Oklahoma City. And you can see in 2010, we actually added one city to our total, finishing at 21 cities served by nonstop service. Then the, I believe it's the last Then the, I believe it's the last priority we're going to look at here this morning is the priority to enhance the quality of life for our citizens. And again, the measure you have before you comes from our citizen survey, and we simply asked the citizens that question, how satisfied are you with the quality of life in Oklahoma City? And in 2010, continuing the, you know, the trend of strong performance from our 2010 survey, you can see that 78% was the satisfaction rating, about 8% higher than what we had targeted. We've also adjusted this target up for the next time we do our survey. The next measure, in terms of enhancing the quality of life, comes from ticket sales at city-operated venues. And the graph that you have before you this morning actually looks at tickets sold at the Civic Center and the Rose State Performing Arts Theater. There is some information in your report that also pulls in ticket sales at Ford and Cox Center. But looking at the Civic Center and Rose State, you can see that in 2010, ticket sales dropped off, not only from the previous year's totals, but actually came in under target. So ticket sales went from about 350,000 roughly, down to just a little over 250,000. And again, I think this is kind of an indicator of the year we had in 2010, where, you know, people just spent a lot less money. I mean, generally, you think of entertainment choices as coming from people's discretionary income, and we all know that people generally, last year, spent less money. We're going to look in a minute at satisfaction ratings at the Civic Center, and you'll see that they actually increased, so.
Is there some reason that you just picked those two facilities and didn't pick a broader, I mean, like the Ford and Cox?
We did include the Ford and Cox Center totals in this report here.
Mm-hmm.
But for purposes of the presentation this morning, the Ford and Cox Center totals were impacted, you know, mainly due to the closures. And so, we were just thinking for comparison purposes, if we took the Ford and Cox Center out, you know, the decrease in ticket sales related to closure, maybe we'd get a better picture of ticket sales overall, just looking at the facilities that were open all year.
And that was just the Civic Center and?
And Rose State.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a matter that the Ford Center was skewed because we shut down?
No, you just, you want to make an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yes, sir.
Did you give any consideration including the zoo?
We have not included that in our ticket totals in the past, but I think that's a good point.
All right.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the overview, anyway, of the council priorities. We're going to look now at some of the more departmental-type information. Again, we have them organized by service area. So we'll go ahead and start with the culture and rec area. We have measures from parks and MAPS included here. In the Parks and Recreation Department, you know, one of the things they do is, they set a pretty lofty goal for themselves in that they try to maintain all the parks and public grounds on schedule 100% of the time. And you can see that, from the note on your slide there, that in FY2010, they were able to accomplish that. Looking down here at the bottom of the slide, you can see we've dropped in some satisfaction ratings for you. Looking at aquatic facilities and Civic Center, you can see that satisfaction ratings in 2010 actually increased pretty significantly. I think we have about a 16% increase in aquatic facilities, probably not much of a surprise due to the continuing popularity of the spray grounds. But again, just a, I think, a good indicator that the trend is going the right direction. On the Civic Center, we have about a 19% increase in satisfaction there. So, again, I think that's an interesting dynamic. Ticket sales were down, but satisfaction ratings are up.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why do you think that the increase in reference to parks relates to spray parks? I mean, what do you use as an indicator to say that the spray parks is one of the driving satisfactions of citizens in reference to the parks?
Well, our thought there is, you know, it's just a, it's a, the measure itself is just a general indicator of satisfaction with aquatic facilities overall. It could be, you know, pools, you know, the family aquatic centers, and spray grounds are included. And just with the participation rates, and, you know, what we perceive to be the popularity of the spray grounds, we felt that that was probably contributing to the higher satisfaction rating. Now, I don't know that the survey actually goes into the detail of, you know, are they satisfied with spray grounds versus pools?
Well, and that's my point, is that, you know, do you, I mean, in reference to the pools that are available, the family aquatic pools, do you use that as a comparison in reference to the satisfaction of those individuals who have access to the full family aquatic centers?
Yeah, at this time, we don't measure the satisfaction ratings between the different types of aquatic facilities. So it could be that the family aquatic centers could be the driver. Just thinking, again, with the popularity of the spray grounds, we thought that could have been a contributor to the increase. But really, we don't know for certain until we do that type of analysis or ask that type of survey. Looking at the MAPS office, we included some numbers here for you to give you an idea of the percent of public schools that are in a new or renovated school. In 2010, you can see, we finished with just almost 30% of the public school students in a new school. We went ahead and dropped in the next three years' worth of targets for you to look at, just to kind of see what the projections are. And you can see that 2011 is a pretty big year with the target there to finish with over half of the students in a new or renovated school. If we want to look specifically at what happened in 2010, we have a note there at the bottom of your slide mentioning that eight newly renovated schools were opened in 2010. Looking at the area of general government, we have two departments we're going to look at here, the City Manager's Office and IT. And in the City Manager's Office, we decided to look at a performance measure from the Action Center. And, you know, the Action Center, for some residents, this may be their only contact with a person from the city, you know, when they call in with an inquiry, or call in with a concern or complaint. And so obviously, turnaround time is very important. And the department has a goal of responding to all Action Center requests within 10 days. Their target is actually 96%. They achieved that in 2010. And you can see that their performance is relatively consistent, or has been consistent, over the last three years. And then the next department we'll look at is information technology. You can see that 100% of the time, the data network was available to end users. And so, obviously, the IT department, they measure uptime in many different ways, but having the data network up is obviously critical to anybody that's trying to use a computer to do their job. The graph here at the bottom of your slide looks at the percent of help desk incidents resolved in 24 hours. The IT department tries to get all those incidents resolved, again, within about a day. You can see that in 2010, they finished at 88% as compared to a target of 95%. So, you know, 88% of their calls were resolved within 24 hours. Although it is shy of the target they had set, if you look back to where they were in 2009, the performance is relatively consistent. They basically achieved their target in 2009, increased it for 2010, and pretty well maintained the same level of performance. And that's something we do work with departments to do. We do encourage them to set stretch goals. Moving on to public safety, we'll look at a few performance measures from fire and police. In the fire department, as we actually just discussed this morning, public outreach and safety is very important to them. One of the things they do is, as was discussed, is pass out smoke detectors. And in FY10, almost 5,000 smoke detectors were given to Oklahoma City residents last year. The other measure we chose to look at was response time. Obviously, response times are always critical when you're talking about public safety. And, you know, the fire department, they look at response times in different ways. They measure their response times for emergency medical responses. They look at their response times for fire responses. They look at the time it takes to dispatch calls and so forth. The one we have here this morning looks at the percent of emergency medical responses responded to within five minutes or less. And that's actually from the time their dispatch to the time they arrive. Emergency medical responses make up, you know, the majority of their calls, so we thought this would probably be a good one to look at. You can see that in 2010, they finished at about 72% of their emergency medical calls being responded to within five minutes. That's ahead of the target of 70%. And you can see their performance is relatively consistent over the last three years, exceeding their target and finishing in the 70 percentile. In the police department, we have a couple of measures here that we'll look at. The first one comes from our citizen survey, and that's just asking the citizens about their feelings of safety. How safe do you feel in Oklahoma City? You can see that in 2010, we saw increases. We finished, or actually, the survey results were 60% of citizens saying they feel safe as compared to the target of 55. The measure down at the bottom of your screen looks at response times. In police, they're similar to fire. They look at their response times in different ways. But for Priority One calls, they measure how many of the Priority One calls are able to respond to within nine minutes and 30 seconds. And as, I'm sure most of you are familiar, the Priority One call is essentially a call where someone's life is in danger, whether it's crime-related or not. For FY2010, 73% of those Priority One calls were responded to within nine minutes and 30 seconds. And that's really pretty consistent with how they've been performing over the last two or three years. It's actually about a percentage point better than what they had reported in 2009. So response times are pretty consistent. Looking on to public service, I believe this will finish out the service areas we're going to look at this morning. We have measures from three departments, the Development Services Department, Public Works, and Utilities. In Development Services, we look at the percent of building-related inspections that are completed within two working days. This is measured, this turnaround time is measured in the Development Center. You can see that in 2010, the department achieved their target of 70% here. Performance is up from 2009.
Why was the target reduced thirty?
You know, this is one where, if you look at the previous two years, the department has, you know, essentially kind of, you know, struggled to reach their target. And so, you know, it's probably just a call of the program manager of the department to kind of back that off into something that might be more achievable. I think what's important to take from this, though, is, you know, in 2008, they had a pretty lofty target. They didn't make it. They increased it in 2009, again, trying to emphasize the performance. Backed it off in 2010, but ended up achieving it and actually increasing their performance over the previous year.
So they increased performance by lowering the goal?
Well, no, they actually...
That's an interesting psychological effort there, isn't it?
Well, I think maybe having a higher goal was an incentive for them to...
Well, you know, it could have been that they had a higher incentive to achieve the goal that was actually achievable. The other goals just weren't achievable, for whatever reason.
Yeah, and again, I think that's, if you look at just the performance from 2009 versus 2010, they actually increased their performance by 4%, but, yeah.
But to begin with, you've got to remember the goal was arbitrary. So, I agree. It's not the direction you want to go in, but, that's right. And I think what they decided was, that it just, in retrospect, it wasn't achievable under the, you know, the current level of priorities that we place upon them.
We did a reorganization at that point in time. We restructured the department, had a new department head at that point. So it's probably a number of things, but your point's well taken.
In the Public Works Department, we decided to look at the pothole repairs completed within three days of complaint. You can see that in 2010, performance actually dropped off from where it was in 2009, coming in about 9% under the target of 80%. But again, I think we've talked about this one before, but just the sheer volume of pothole repairs related to complaints last year was significantly higher than what they've experienced the previous two years. I think it was actually almost double.
Well, again, we had some, just some of the worst winter we've can recall, and having that many, much storm and that many freeze潮 cycles and such, the number of potholes were very much...
And by creating the pothole hotline, I think we also increased calls, because we were actually soliciting people to tell us where the trouble spots were so that we could get in after the storms and try to do a better job. So if you're soliciting calls, chances are you're going to get more calls, and you're, it's going to be tougher to reach your percentage.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see the number that we actually repaired compared to previous years, if we could get that number some point to us.
Okay. And then the last set of measures is going to come from the Utilities Department, looking at water main breaks and wastewater backup calls. Obviously, any one of these two things occur, a citizen is generally going to experience an interruption in service. And so, timeliness of getting these type of items repaired is important, and the department measures it accordingly. In terms of water main breaks repaired within 72 hours, 73% of those were accomplished within the timeframe in 2010, exceeding the target of 67. And then, with wastewater backup calls, they actually also exceeded their target, down a couple of percentage points from the previous year. With that, that concludes the overview of information that's included in your performance report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, the feedback is very valuable to us. And to the extent that, I think each of us sees some areas that we need to work on a little bit harder, and other areas that we take some pride in, because it seems like we've had some improvement. I think overall, that the quality of the workforce we have is very, very high. And we're very, very appreciative, and I hope the employees understand that we appreciate their efforts. And I know the citizens do. I think it's reflected in the performance gathers, the information that's gathered.
One point I'd like to ask for some information on, on the PCI index, we said 67 was our average. Would it be possible to break that out, between arterial streets and residential streets?
Probably.
Probably. I'll check and see whether...
If it's not too much of a problem, I'd like to see what those numbers look like.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks very much. Yeah, Larry, you have a question?
Just one, if I make sure I'm on the right track of thinking here.
Yes, sir.
Fiscal year 2010 is the calendar timeframe from July 1 of 2009 to June 30 of 2010. And the performance statistics, like potholes, number of potholes repaired, or the number of calls for backups that were answered within two hours, those are performance indicators based on the results, the actual field results during that time period.
Yes, that is correct.
But questions involved whether the citizens feel happy, or content, or satisfied, was all based on the survey that was done back in, what, the summer of 2009?
We have the results in August.
So there's a lag on that, which somewhat doesn't really give us a picture of what the citizens are thinking of today, whereas the performance indicators show the actual hardcore results of the fiscal year.
That's correct.
Thank you all.
All right. Any other city manager reports?
No, sir. I think that covers it this morning.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Phil, you want to come back up?
Yeah, Phil Hughes, again, 1145 Northwest 43rd. Thank you. For completeness, I and about four other people significantly have worked on to advance a $4.7 billion rail plan for Oklahoma City that I named MetNet a while back. And a key component of any rail network would be an express rail viaduct where the current I-40 bridge deck is. This is true of MetNet certainly. And anything, I think MetNet is optimal. I don't think you could get better out of MIT. As a matter of fact, I've sent the plan to MIT for, look at graduate studies. But no matter how much energy money is in Oklahoma City, the suburbs will not be viable without a modern rail network. And a modern rail network will not be viable without that express rail viaduct going across downtown. And thank you, Pete, for the great comments that you made. We've got tremendous problems. People won't know how high the price of fuel is going to go, how quickly. We're sitting there trying to shoot down an incoming problem that's going the speed of sound with a shotgun when we need an MX missile. And we've got to get around this politics. We've got to do something for the whole city, and it needs to be dramatic. I've had constant differing information regarding the status of the bridge. There was a period, Oklahomans says there wasn't money to remove it. And then, three weeks ago, I had to jump up again and start getting active again about keeping the city from removing that bridge, or at least at the minimum, providing for a new one. But let's go ahead and use the old one, and then put a new one in later. That's just, that's getting a little ahead of it. But it's not right to say that this misinformation is not right when my time is valuable, too. I could have been, when I started campaigning with legislature back five years ago, I sent emails to everybody. And Mark Musser said that governor's office was inundated. At any rate, I wanted to go on and say... the governor's office was inundated. Any rate, I wanted to go on and say, based upon what I'm seeing, it's very, it's very difficult to bring in a practical solution when you're faced with these differing situations in the city and say, "Well, why are you fighting to keep the bridge? The city's going to keep it." Can you not see how difficult it makes a democracy to do this? So here's what I really is going to think has happened. Mick, you said that you give credence now to Jeff Speck's recommendation and you want four lanes for the parkway. This is what I think is going to happen. Traffic Control is going to say quite rightly that four lanes isn't enough. That will call for a Commonwealth Avenue approach, which has always been the best. It'd be beautiful, like Boston, in which Jeff Speck mentioned. And that will allow us to put two tracks and two stations on the existing I-40 bridge deck. We are going to have to have a huge amount, a unit-step function, to bring decent rail in the United States. And I think it's going to come from the International Monetary Fund. And I ran by David Boyn in a memo a while back, just a letter. And I'll speak for this woman very graciously. She's a very fine person. She worked for Gene Rainbow and Burns Harvest. I said, "If I had my wishes, Mary Pointer would oversee $5 billion of funding in IMF." And Mary and I had lunch about ten months ago. I'm saying, I'm vowed not to say what's going to happen, but it looks like things could happen very well. But I do not think that Mary Pointer would have any problem with using international monetary funds to trim that bridge on the side. And if we need to, go ahead and put a new deck in, move the tracks over, and then have a nice rail system right through the heart of Oklahoma City. Now, I have to address the other issue. And I think I'll save that until I see which way this parkway is heading. But the misinformation has been roughly, in 2004, 2005, you know, I sent a blanket email to all the legislature. And Mark Musser said Brad Henry's office was inundated. What do I do with all these letters? So then there's an article in the Oklahoman comes out, "The city can't find money." Dean Scher of the Chamber reiterated this. And Skip, in front of several people at Church of Christ Maps Three meeting, "You said they're not going to tear that bridge down." Well, that undermined what I was trying to do. They're getting disinformation. And then I have to go and say, "Well, if the city does this, then we do this. And if the city does that, we do that." But I'm going to stay on this thing because, per what Pete says, we have got to start changing more quickly. And our rail plan is there. My goal is, I want to submit the rail plan to investors for 2.5 million. And I want a good organization that might use Bob Anthony or Bernice Kane or politicians and lawyers of that caliber. We break up our plan. I just want 10% of that to make things up for 10 years of my life and just some friends of mine. But other than that, we create an organization called Network 90. We parse the plan out and send it through Ryan Whaley and McAfee Law Firm or anybody else. And then after that, it's out of our hands. Mary can be at ACOG along with people like Jerry Church and Doug Rex, and they can administer contracts and payments on it. Thank you.
Uh-huh, Phil. Thanks for coming down. Ready to adjourn? Or adjourn?